The notice requirement provided for the open public meeting law has been satisfied.
Recording in progress.
I'll start again. The notice requirement provided for the open public meeting law has been satisfied. Notice was properly given, said having notice been transmitted to the Courier-News on Thursday, September 24th, as well as posting on the bulletin board in City Hall. Clerk, may we have a roll call?
Council members Briggs-Jones.
Present.
Cherry.
Present.
Graham.
Present.
McCray.
Present.
Wyatt.
Present.
Vice President Sessom.
Present.
Council President Hockaday.
Present.
All members present.
And at form.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and just.
And he does his form.
Humbly we ask God, the giver of peace and the lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will, to grant the light of his spirit, and all those who work for justice and who work for peace. Amen.
Okay. Hello. We are going to commence this meeting with executive session. Madam Deputy, please read the execution.
Executive Session Resolution Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act authorizes a public body to exclude the public from the portion at a meeting which specified topics will clearly endanger the public interest, or where the personal, privacy, or guaranteed rights of individuals who activities or affairs are to be discussed would be clearly in danger of unwarranted invasion, whereas the matter is about to be presented for discussion clearly meet the circumstances test of such act. Now therefore be resolved that the municipal council, the city of Plainfield, and the county of Union now adjourns its public session to reconvene an executive session for the purpose of discussing the following: pending anticipated litigation and contract negotiations. Be it further resolved that the discussion in executive session will be disclosed in the minutes to be released at the next regular city council meeting, provided that consideration of the subject matter has been closed, or that where such matters adversely affect the rights of prospective current or past public officers or personnel of the city of Plainfield. Such individuals have in writing requested the disclosure of such discussion at a public meeting, and provided such public disclosure were no longer clearly the public interest. Be it further resolved that the public is now hereby excluded from this portion of the executive session.
May I have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved. Second.
Clerk, roll call.
Roll call going to executive session. Council members Briggs-Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessom.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
Now in executive session.
Okay. Thank you. Recording in progress.
Okay, we will resume business for the evening, beginning first with public comment limited to resolutions and ordinances being considered this evening. A total of thirty minutes has been allocated. The floor is now open.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Nancy P. of our Plainfield regarding R.359-25. First, I want to be clear that I'm here before you tonight as a citizen and not connected to any organization or group, just as I'm representative of my family. Unfortunately, you are in a difficult situation with no easy choices. It is admirable and charitable on the part of a developer and the city to enter into a community benefit that would financially benefit the health center. However, this resolution is a bit alarming to me because of the precedent might set and because the health center was formerly in bankruptcy for five years. It took a lot for the federal judge and the trustee to get the health center out of bankruptcy. I have a lot of questions, but I'll go to the bottom. Are there any other options available to sustain the federally qualified health center? One other option besides asking a private entity, redevelop or assist the health center, why not ask JFK or Hackensack Meridian Health to assist the health center like Muhlenberg used to do? JFK and Hackensack absorbed all of Muhlenberg's assets with which the donors of those funds did not intend. There were two court hearings to repurpose some of the Muhlenberg restricted funds. In 2017, a court transcript, Mr. Manzello said, quote, "The city of Plainfield was noticed as a party of interest here. The city has no objection to the modification of the trust so long as the funds remain at the nursing school and the city of Plainfield. The city should ask JFK and Hackensack Meridian to provide an accounting certification that all the repurposed trusts and endowments remain in the city of Plainfield and at the nursing school, and provide an accounting of all the other non-repurposed Muhlenberg trusts and endowments. I know there are at least two trusts that were not repurposed, and those trusts could be used to help the health center, as the original donors intended, as long as a court so ordered. One of those trusts has provided over an average of $80,000 each year for the past five years to the Muhlenberg Foundation. Through my research of the Muhlenberg trusts and endowments, I found out that my family has a vested interest in that trust, because one of my father's Ohio relatives was named as a party to be noticed about the trust. These Muhlenberg trusts and endowments were donated by residents to provide health care, access, and scholarships, and these funds should, quote, 'remain at the nursing school and the city of Plainfield.' As Mr. Manzello and I said in court in 2017, the trust connected to my father's relatives could be used to help the health center, and I am willing to testify in court to that effect on behalf of my father. Thank you."
Thank you. I'm going to suspend public comment just for a bit, because I want to have the opportunity for the health center to give their presentation, so that the individuals making public comment could be somewhat responsive to that. So, let's handle that order of business. So you can go forward with your presentation, and then we will reopen public comment for all who want to maybe chime in on what's presented. Floor is yours.
As was mentioned, the health center did exit bankruptcy in 2020, and had projections for the payment and repayment for bankruptcy debt. And consequently, in May of 2020, exiting bankruptcy went into a pandemic, which caused the health center immediately pivoted services and pivoted the organization to address the immediate needs of the community. And we did that for several years, staying open, providing services, getting vaccines, doing tests, and being an integral part of the organization. Much like other healthcare entities that are finding themselves, it stressed coming out of the pandemic, neighborhood health, if everybody else had a cold, we had the flu because of the extra debt that needed to be addressed. So we did look into doing a recovery plan, and we are in the process of doing this recovery plan to make sure that neighborhood stays in this community, providing the much-needed services, recognizing that there would be a huge gap in care if we were to not be here. And so with that, we have been reorganizing our staff. We contracted the organization down to reduce expenses. We are looking for partnerships that are going to add services, like in-house pharmacy, which, well, in addition to providing services increases revenue for under 340B. We have, you know, I as the CEO, have been working for strategic partnerships that are going to drive more patients and services into this organization. We have switched EMRs for improved patient flow. We executed a comprehensive plan to reorganize the outstanding vendor accounts. We onboarded a new revenue cycle management company to improve patient service revenue collections, and again, reduce salary expenses to be in line with our grant revenues, so that would also stabilize payroll obligations. We have looked into and applied for emergency response credits, which the health center is looking to apply that to also help stabilize it, and also looking to do a sale of the undeveloped land. Just to go over some utilization, and these are according to 2024 UDS data, which is our annual report. The federal government requires a comprehensive federal reporting out on several different data points, but we focused in on, and this is just for Plainfield, under our UDS data, we have 8,388 patients, and about half of those patients are Plainfield residents proper. And of that, you can see the breakdown, significant amount are uninsured or on Medicaid. We contracted the organization, so we currently have now 56 employees, and 10 of those employees are residents of the Plainfield area. Just wanted to review the services that the health center offers that are critical for the health of this community, and this is provided with integrated care. So I will give you, you know, comprehensive from birth to geriatrics. In addition, we have Ryan White Services that services the HIV population. We have a perinatal agreement with JFK Kennedy Hospital, where they have OBs on-site to handle our high-risk OB-GYN patients. And we are part of the new sickle cell, New Jersey Sickle Cell Pilot Program, which is one of a kind, and we are one of those five sites throughout New Jersey that is in the process of rolling out sickle cell services. We also opened up a comprehensive ultrasound, onsite ultrasound services, and are soon to be opening up a 3D mammography or mammogram services as well. We work closely with Plainfield as we have done for years. We are in the Department of Health, where we have the immunization program there. We are partnered with the physician, the Board of Education, as the school physician. We were approved to be a WIC site, and we are also an approved Community Food Bank of New Jersey site. We have distributed food to up to 400 to 500 people every fourth Tuesday of the month. And in addition to that, we are part of another food bank program with Costco and Aldo's, where they also donate food, and we've been giving a van with freezer and refrigerator, where we pick up those foods, and we offer those to the patients at least two to three times a week onsite as well. Again, we talked about the sickle cell program and the Storks Nest program, which provides a lot of prenatal advice and care to patients. And with those sessions that they have, and this is to address maternal infant mortality, they are able to purchase much-needed clothes and things they need for their baby. This is just a general overview of the sickle cell program, and again, it's designed to fill a gap in care, because there are 23 pediatric sickle cell programs in the state. There's only one adult. So there was a lot of work to create this sickle cell pilot program, to link patients who come out of pediatrics into adults, and also to link them to services with the hospital. And again, looking to get an onsite infusion center, so that patients do not have to sit in the hospital for hours. This is an overview again of the Storks Nest program, and that's it.
Okay. We are going to resume public comment for resolutions and ordinances being considered this evening. Name and city.
Good evening. My name is Beverly Chris. I reside at 531 West Fourth Street here in the city of Plainfield. Greetings, Mayor, MAP, and City Council member. By way of introduction, I am a lifelong resident of the city of Plainfield, and a former volunteer and former senior executive assistant of Neighborhood Health Services Corporation, also known as Plainfield Health Center. More importantly, I am a patient of Neighborhood Health Services, and have generations of family members who have been patients of Neighborhood Health Services. My unwavering gratitude has always been with the center, particularly for the healthcare services that my father received as the center's first HIV/AIDS patient. The care provided by Plainfield Health Center enabled my father to pass away with a sense of dignity. This evening, I stand before you with dire concern regarding the condition of the facility and services, as well as the current financial status of the center. As many of you may or may not know, Neighborhood Health Services filed for Chapter 11 bankruptcy in the District of New Jersey Bankruptcy Court on January 7, 2015. Due to unsatisfactory submission of a financial recovery plan, and the Board of Directors' failure to perform its judiciary oversight, the bankruptcy proceeding lasted for more than four years, and resulted to a court-appointed administrator being assigned to manage the operations of the center, resulting in the removal of then the CEO and appointment of the current CEO. My concern is with the center's inability to sustain the November 12, 2019 court-approved financial recovery plan. I am specifically concerned with the proposed $1.5 million being infused into the center. My specific concerns are, is the $1.5 million bailout funds a short-term solution or a long-term solution? What exactly will the $1.5 million be used for? What is the total debt of the center, and are there other partners willing to provide financial support and/or bailout funding? Did NHSC provide the city with the list of unpaid vendors, and are they currently providing services, or have they discontinued providing services? Is the internal revenue part of the owed vendors? I also would like to know, are all payroll deductions up to date? Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. Sharon Robinson-Briggs, President of the Plainfield Area NAACP, Plainfield, New Jersey. Just have a couple of comments. One, I was asked a lot of questions outside with regard to this resolution, so may I ask that for those who may not understand, if this body could please explain in layman's terms exactly what this resolution is about? I'm wondering also with regard to the health center, and I join those who have spoken before me, that I enjoyed the services that the health center rendered on behalf of the people of Plainfield. In fact, years ago, the health center used to offer many free community services, community events, free ones, to help improve the quality of life for its residents, and one of the items was a health fair that would be given, and it would be given in the parking lot, and many folks would be able to attend and participate in the health fair. There would be immunizations, there would be information, literature that would be given, just a lot of things that would be offered to the community that was extremely beneficial. So I'm wondering if the health center is given this money, would you be able to do some of these type things for the community, to help embrace the community and bring people back in the fold and be able to have the services rendered that they used to get? Will there be an advisory community group forum to work with the health center, one that might be able to work with the board, as well as be able to provide suggestions for management and oversight? Because the bottom line is that we all need health services, but we need to make sure that every few years, we don't end up in the same position. Okay? And so I would assume that if there is a way to get such a large sum of money to the health center, that hopefully, when we all come back to this room on, I guess the 14th is the next meeting, I'll be back to talk about those four families that had fatalities from the flash floods. Thank you so much.
Next.
Good evening, Council President. Good evening, Mayor. Council President, Mayor, City Clerk. Sometimes it's largely a thankless job, and I thank you all for the jobs that you do.
Name and city for the record.
I will be remaining anonymous tonight. And my first question is, is there a time clock, so I know what my time limit? Is there a time clock?
There's a timer, but not a clock.
So I don't, how much time do we have? Three minutes?
Three minutes.
Okay, that's an issue, because it'd be really simple to just put a clock up, so the public could have an idea of their...
We can make an announcement when there's a minute left, but...
The other question is, is there a public portion at the end of this meeting to speak on items not on the agenda?
No. This is a special meeting that's for regular meetings.
Where's the borough attorney at?
Right here.
You are aware that every municipality in New Jersey has to set aside a portion for the public to speak on items not on the agenda, even if it's at a special meeting. You are aware of that, correct?
Sir, what resolution are you speaking about? This here is...
I'm against the resolution for all these things that I'm mentioning, because there's some housekeeping issues. So for the things that I just mentioned, each and every one of them, I'm against the resolution, because we don't have a public portion set aside that New Jersey legally requires for items not on the agenda, regardless of a special meeting. It doesn't give you special privileges to restrict the public from engaging with local government, engagement at these meetings. So therefore, I'm against the resolution. I'm against the resolution because we don't have a clock facing the public for proper clarity.
You have one minute, sir.
I'm against the resolution because I'm being interrupted, so you can tell me what the time is.
You asked that you be notified when the...
I didn't.
Okay.
I did not.
Okay.
I'm against the resolution because we're withholding the amount of time that I could... I'm looking for clarity here. I don't just come as a member of the public, I come as the founder of an organization called the Neutralization of Council Meeting Conduct. That's NCMC, and there's a lot of things happening all over New Jersey, a lot of non-compliant issues and stuff, and I've seen nothing but just disastrous things since the second I got here. Nice individuals, very nice people so far, I've seen that, and I do appreciate that.
If I could just object, we're here speaking about...
It's my public speaking time, please do not cut me off. You cannot object. It is my public speaking time, this is part of the issue that I'm talking about. The city clerk cannot cut me off during my public comment time. Mr. Attorney, can you please step in and tell the city clerk? I'm against the resolution for this reason. You're withholding the clock and interrupting me.
Speaking to the...
...of prenatal advice and care to patients. And with those sessions that they have, and this is to address maternal infant mortality, they are able to purchase much-needed, much-needed clothes and things they need for their baby. This is just a general overview of the sickle cell program. And again, it's designed to fill a gap in care because there are 23 pediatric sickle cell programs in the state. There's only one adult. So there was a lot of work to create this sickle cell pilot program to link patients who come out of pediatrics into adults and also to link them to services with the hospital. And again, looking to get an onsite infusion center so that patients do not have to sit in the hospital for hours. This is an overview again of the Storks Ness Program. And that's, that's it.
We are going to resume public comment for resolutions and ordinance being considered this evening. Name and city.
Good evening. My name is Beverly Chris. I reside at 531 West Forest Street here in the city of Plainfield. Greetings, Mayor, MAP, and City Council member. By way of introduction, I am a lifelong resident of the city of Plainfield and a former volunteer and former senior executive assistant of Neighborhood Health Services Corporation, also known as Plainfield Health Center. More importantly, I am a patient of Neighborhood Health Services and have generations of family members who have been patients of Neighborhood Health Services. My unwavering gratitude has always been with the center, particularly for the healthcare services that my father received as the center's first HIV/AIDS patient. The care provided by Plainfield Health Center enabled my father to pass away with a sense of dignity. This evening, I stand before you with dire concern regarding the condition of the facility and services, as well as the current financial status of the center. As many of you may or may not know, Neighborhood Health Services filed for Chapter 11 bankruptcy in the District of New Jersey Bankruptcy Court on January 7, 2015. Due to unsatisfactory submission of a financial recovery plan and the Board of Directors' failure to perform its judiciary oversight, the bankruptcy proceeding lasted for more than four years and resulted to a court-appointed administrator being assigned to manage the operations of the center, resulting in the removal of then the CEO and appointment of the current CEO. My concern is with the center's inability to sustain the November 12, 2019 court-approved financial recovery plan. I am specifically concerned with the proposed $1.5 million being infused into the center. My specific concerns are, is the $1.5 million bailout funds a short-term solution or a long-term solution? What exactly will the $1.5 million be used for? What is the total debt of the center? And are there other partners willing to provide financial support and/or bailout funding? Did NHSC provide the city with the list of unpaid vendors? And are they currently providing services? Or have they discontinued providing services? Is the internal revenue part of the owed vendors? I also would like to know, are all payroll deductions up to date? Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Sharon Robinson-Briggs, President of the Plainfield Area NAACP, Plainfield, New Jersey. Just have a couple of comments. One, I was asked a lot of questions outside with regard to this resolution. So may I ask that for those who may not understand, if this body could please explain in layman's terms exactly what this resolution is about? Wondering also with regard to the health center, and I join those who have spoken before me, that I enjoyed the services that the health center rendered on behalf of the people of Plainfield. In fact, years ago, the health center used to offer many free community services, community events, free ones, to help improve the quality of life for its residents. And one of the items was a health fair that would be given, and it would be given in the parking lot. And many folks would be able to attend and participate in the health fair. There would be immunizations, there would be information, literature that would be given, just a lot of things that would be offered to the community that was extremely beneficial. So I'm wondering if, if the health center is giving this money, would you be able to do some of these type things for the community to help embrace the community and bring people back in the fold and be able to have the services rendered that they used to get? Will there be an advisory community group forum to work with the health center? One that might be able to work with the board as well as be able to provide suggestions for management and oversight? Because the bottom line is that we all need health services, but we need to make sure that every few years, we don't end up in the same position. Okay? And so I would assume that if there is a way to get such a large sum of money to the health center, that hopefully, when we all come back to this room on, I guess the 14th is the next meeting, I'll be back to talk about those four families that had fatalities from the flash floods. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Council President. Good evening, Mayor. Council President, Mayor, City Clerk. Sometimes it's largely a thankless job, and I thank you all for the jobs that you do.
Name and city for the record.
I will be remaining anonymous tonight. My first question is, is there a time clock so I know what my time limit? Is there a time clock?
There's a timer, but not a clock.
So I don't, how much time do we have? Three minutes?
Three minutes.
Okay, that's an issue. Because it'd be really simple to just put a clock up so the public could have an idea of their...
We can make an announcement when there's a minute left.
The other question is, is there a public portion at the end of this meeting to speak on items not on the agenda?
No. This is a special meeting. That's for regular meetings.
Where's the borough attorney at?
Right here.
You are aware that every municipality in New Jersey has to set aside a portion for the public to speak on items not on the agenda, even if it's at a special meeting. You are aware of that, correct?
Sir, what resolution are you speaking about? Does this, this here is...
I'm against the resolution for all these things that I'm mentioning, because there's some housekeeping issues. So for the things that I just mentioned, each and every one of them, I'm against the resolution because we don't have a public portion set aside that New Jersey legally requires for items not on the agenda, regardless of a special meeting. It doesn't give you special privileges to restrict the public from engaging with local government, engagement at these meetings. So therefore, I'm against the resolution. I'm against the resolution because we don't have a clock facing the public for proper clarity.
You have one minute, sir.
I'm against the resolution because I'm being interrupted, so you can tell me what the time is.
You asked that you be notified when the...
I didn't.
Okay.
I did not.
Okay.
I'm against the resolution because we're withholding the amount of time that I could... I'm looking for clarity here. I don't just come as a member of the public. I come as the founder of an organization called the Neutralization of Council Meeting Conduct. That's NCMC. And there's a lot of things happening all over New Jersey, a lot of noncompliant issues and stuff. And I've seen nothing but just disastrous things since the second I got here. Nice individuals, very nice people so far. I've seen that, and I do appreciate that.
Council President, if I could just object, we're here speaking about...
It's my public speaking time. Please do not cut me off. You cannot object. It is my public speaking time. This is part of the issue that I'm talking about. The City Clerk cannot cut me off during my public comment time. Mr. Attorney, can you please step in and tell the City Clerk...
This is limited to resolution...
I'm against the resolution for this reason. You're withholding the clock and interrupting me.
I'm speaking to the Council President.
You cannot during my time. This is my three minutes. Is it three minutes even?
Speaking to the president, sir.
Because I still didn't get that answer.
It's three minutes.
Please don't interrupt me, because I wouldn't interrupt you, and I would not disrupt the meeting so I could inappropriately speak during a portion of time that does not allow me to speak.
Speaker's time is up, Council President.
Thank you, sir.
Unfortunately, we're going to have to come back now. I really hate to do this, but, I mean, I just wanted to come here, make a couple statements. I don't appreciate being interrupted. I don't appreciate any clarification as I asked about the...
Okay. Well, thank you.
I don't know what else to say, other than this was a disappointment.
Good evening. My name is Regina Harley. I'm here on behalf of the Plainfield area local NAACP Second Vice President, and also I'm on the Advisory Board for the Garden State Leaders. First question would be, will the health center close if they don't get the money that is on the table right now? I'm also concerned about the staffing, the Board of Directors, the legal team, what changes are going to be made. Concerned about partnerships, you know, who the new partnerships will be. Because how can a turnaround be made if the same people are on staff? There's a mistrust or distrust with whoever was on staff before in leadership? That's what I'm concerned about. Thank you.
Hello? Can I make comments about the Waynewood Park building?
Is that being considered this evening?
I think it is. Is it? Okay. Yeah. My name is James Scruggs. I live on Lafayette Place in Plainfield, longtime resident here in Plainfield. From what I understand, there's going to be a several hundred unit apartment building going up in Waynewood Park or around there. And I also understand that there's .8, .8 of a car parking for each one of the units, which, I mean, I've never seen .8 of a car, first of all. All of my neighbors seem to have two and three. I'm wondering where the parking is going to be. Also, right now, just getting out of Lafayette Place onto Front Street has become challenging. With additional several hundred people, it's going to become untenable. And I'm wondering if there's going to be stoplights placed on Lafayette and Waynewood Park to deal with the additional traffic? And what happens to, where do people park in these units? Is there going to be underground parking? And I'm talking, and people are looking at me, and thank you for looking at me, but I feel like there's no dialogue here. Is that how it works? I just, I'm curious and ignorant of the process.
Your time for public comment is your time, and your questions will be answered afterwards so as not to impede on your time.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So yeah, that's, that's my concern. If this building is going to go up for several hundred units and there's no parking, what happens? And also, what happens to Lafayette Place and Oxford Place or Waynewood Park? Is there going to be a light on the, on the corners? Thank you.
You're welcome. So your questions will be addressed, okay?
Thank you.
You came up already? No, just once. Any further public comment for resolutions being considered this evening? Okay, a motion to close public comment.
So...
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, public comment is now closed. Prior to going to resolutions, I'd like the administration to address any questions heard. There were quite a few questions. Answer as many as possible so we can have some clarification. Or you can use the questions as a, as a method of describing the resolutions that we're going into, if you want to do it comprehensively. Because I know that many of the questions that the community has are those that the council also has, and the administration, from what I understand, is prepared to answer. So go right ahead. Floor is yours.
Okay. What is being presented tonight is a resolution to authorize the advancement of a redevelopment agreement. That redevelopment agreement is related to a property that we call 611 West Front Street for short. It does involve a lot that's on the Waywood Park location as well. This was a project that was originally presented to the council and approved in a redevelopment agreement as well as a financial agreement. That project was for a total of 501 units, residential units, and approximately 6,600 square feet of commercial retail space. Originally, the total number of parking spaces were just over 700 total spaces. These parking spaces were never intended to be .8. It was above and beyond because of the original owner wanted to ensure that the parking was more than sufficient. What's being presented tonight in terms of the advancement of the redevelopment agreement is that the original developer, which is SWE Development, they are now looking to transfer or sell the development to a new buyer. That is BH611 that's located in the resolution. A part of transferring this resolution is that there's an opportunity to negotiate not only the terms of the redevelopment agreement again, including the community benefit agreement. Originally, the community benefit agreement was for $500,000. What we're considering now as a way to support the cash infusion needed by the Neighborhood Health Center is a partial increase of this amount and a partial expedited payment. The total increase that we have gone from $500,000 to 3.75 million. This increase of 3.75 million will include an expedited payment of 1.5 million. 1.3 million of that 1.5 million is intended to support the financial needs of the Neighborhood Health Center. We have the opportunity to look at, when we're looking at our community benefit, one of the six categories is supporting health and wellness. So that 1.3 million would go to support the health and wellness, and additional 200,000 would go to the city in terms of an immediate payment. That leaves 2.25 million for future payments. That 2.5 million for a future payment would be used to support a community shuttle for the entire city boundary. The reason why we arrived at the 3.75 million was a part of the discussion, looking with the new developer, which is BH611, is that there was a request to revisit the financial agreement, which is the ordinance that's on for tonight. I would like to place on the records, in terms of ordinance MC 2025-38, we are not going to be considering that for council approval tonight. We will, the administration will present it at a later date. But the reason why I am explaining about the financial agreement is that there's also opportunity to look at that as well. We arrived at the 3.75 number because we did a financial analysis of what there could be a change in, in terms of waiting for a payment over time versus a decreased amount for the pilot or the annual surcharge. So again, what is being presented tonight is advancement of a redevelopment agreement. A part of that advancement of the redevelopment agreement, we are seeking to support a cash infusion for the neighborhood health in the amount of 1.3 million. As a part of that, we are proposing a memorandum of understanding between the city and neighborhood health, which one of, or two of the restrictions or recitals for that agreement would be that the city would be consulted on land use and real estate in relation to about three acres of the property. They would also have accountability in terms of reporting moving forward with neighborhood health. And that would include looking at finances and also consultation moving forward with that. There would also be future consideration of a board position on the neighborhood health. The second memorandum of understanding is related to the new developer. So as I said, we have a new developer that's coming in to purchase the property. This is BH611. This developer, what we're looking at in order to get the 1.5 million, again, just stating on record that 1.3 is proposed to be distributed to Neighborhood Health, 200,000 to the city, would agree in terms of the expedited payment that should this agreement or this resolution be passed, and also executing this MOU. Another thing that should be noted that within this 1.5 million, there is a contingency clause that should we not reach an acceptable and binding redevelopment agreement or financial agreement by January 31 of 2026, the city would be responsible for reimbursing the 1.5 million in the expedited payment. And Council President, if you could just remind me if there are certain questions that you would like me to cover in particular?
Well, one of, one of the questions was the parking. You said it was .8. Is it now one-to-one or better?
Right. So right now, the parking is definitely better than one-to-one. There are a total of 501 units. There are a total of 548 parking spaces proposed now.
Okay. Can you also discuss the commercial component of this development?
Right. Originally, the project was proposed to have a little over 6,000 square feet of commercial retail. The proposal is to move to 20,000 square feet of commercial with the intent to move forward with the grocer.
Any questions from council members?
Mr. Council President?
Yes, Councilman Wyatt?
Yes. I thought Dr. Powell's presentation would have had a little more teeth to it. So it was asked in executive session, and some of the community members asked a question as well, would the 1.3 million sustain the health center? So, Doctor, if it's okay, Dr. Powell, would you speak to how this infusion of cash would help and how long it would sustain the health center?
So this cash infusion is part of a comprehensive financial recovery plan. So in and of itself, it's not designed to just sustain the health center. There is multi-pronged approach that we are moving towards, which includes some other tax credits that we are getting federally, in addition to sale of the land, in addition to restructuring our debt and handling the bankruptcy debt as well.
Council President, also, it was brought to our attention that if the council does not approve this tonight, that the doors would close tomorrow, correct?
The health center would need to close.
Yes, okay. And lastly, we do realize that you operate in Elizabeth as well. So will you scale back in Elizabeth? And is Elizabeth going to add to this? Are they going to contribute to this at all?
Not at this time. I'm still, I am still looking for other partnerships, and I've been in the process of doing that as well.
Okay. So the 1.3 million from the city of Plainfield will cover the location here in Plainfield and Elizabeth as well?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Other questions from council colleagues? Yes, please. Councilwoman Cherry?
So I did see there was roughly 8,500 individuals served through the health center. What's the breakdown between Elizabeth and Plainfield?
So there are about 4,500 patients that are Plainfield, and the, there's another 1,017 that's surrounding Plainfield, and the balance is Elizabeth. So the majority of the patients are here in Plainfield and the surrounding North Plainfield, Piscataway, that area, and it's about another 1,000 for Elizabeth.
What is your plan B if this is not funded? And especially for our most vulnerable population, our OB and our also infectious disease?
So I am in conversations with Hackensack Meridian Hospital, Trinitas Hospital, with HERSA, which is the governing body of federally qualified health centers, to either find another FQAC that would come in, or in the immediate time, like for our OB patients that JFK is, we're already partnering with, but they would see those patients at the hospital and as well as to Trinitas Hospital. And then there would be provided a list of providers that are in the area that the patients can have a choice from, but I wanted to make sure that those critical patients would be cared for. And then HERSA would also, for the Ryan White program, they're identifying a sister program that's close enough to take over those patients as well.
Have you approached the city of Elizabeth for any funding?
I have not. I have approached both hospital systems, both Hackensack Meridian and Robert Wood Johnson Hospital for funding.
So at this time, the only confirmed plan or opportunity on the table is this 1.3 million?
And there's another 1.3 million that Robert Wood Johnson has been in communication with me about.
So if funded, how much of this would, the 1.5 million?
Well, 1.3.
1.3 million?
Yeah.
And then the 200 would go back to the city? How much would that, how far would that take you?
So it's because it's not the only funding, it's not where we're just getting this payment and say that this is going to last three months. There is a pro forma with projections for how this is being applied to reorganize debt and with a combination with other money that is coming in to pay down that debt so that when we operate, we are not underwater with the bankruptcy obligation.
Thank you.
Dr. Powell? Couple questions. So what is, what, if we were to parse out Elizabeth, what does that look like in terms of us only sustaining the Plainfield location? Because if I heard you correctly, our 1.3, we would then be supporting another municipality.
Well, we service all of Union County. So I don't, I don't, I'm responsible for all of Union County, really. And so these patients can be, they can come to the Plainfield location or be from this, around this area, or they could go to the other site. Sometimes the Plainfield... Sometimes the Plainfield residents will visit the Elizabeth site as well. So it's not so, uh, separated like that, because it's one healthcare system. So there are times if the patients need to be seen over in Elizabeth, they can go over there from the Plainfield location as well. So it, you know, I've given you a breakdown of where the patients are located, but they utilize the entire system.
Well, thank you for that, because, uh, and I'm, I'm assuming that you have data that can support that, that the Plainfield residents also go to the Elizabeth site. So thank you for that. That is new information from me this evening. Can we talk about fiscal management and fiscal accountability? And who's on the team at the center? Uh, do you have a CFO? Can you talk about, you know, who are your fiscal leaders that are advising you as the CEO and president, you know, who's running the day-to-day operations? Like, who is advising you on, you know, the fiscal management of the center?
In addition to the finance committee of my board, I have a finance department. And right now, we have a consultant that is providing supplemental acting interim CFO as I look for a new CFO. My CFO has just stepped down in July. And so I have a consultant that is providing CFO services and have accountants that are on staff.
And are you satisfied with the fiscal advice that you're receiving from your financial leadership team?
Well, I, I would prefer to have a new permanent team. So, you know, you, you, even for finance or operations, you can have staff that come, and then if they resign, you have to look and search for a replacement for them. So I am happy with the projections and the work that is being done by the consultant. And this is also being presented with the board and the finance committee of the board as well.
Have any of your top paid staff taken any salary cuts, given the emergency situation that we are in? And I believe in paying people well. I believe that people should be compensated for their years of education and their experience. But in looking at the data, we have people who are making a significant amount of money on the payroll. And so, um, oftentimes, there are sacrifices that have to be made. So I'm wondering, have any of them, um, taken any salary cuts? And is that a part of the plan?
Yes, and yes.
Okay, good to, good to hear. Um, that's it right now, council president, but I may have some more questions.
Thank you. Any other council member?
I remembered my question, council president. I'm sorry, councilwoman, I just remembered my question. Um, so, you know, as, as you are asking us to consider this, there have been some, uh, feedbacks and suggestions in terms of oversight moving forward. Uh, would you all be in objection to there being board representation by members of this administration on your board?
There's no objection.
Okay, more than one seat or just one?
I would talk to my board, but we're open to that, um, having that representation.
And there was, it was raised earlier about community involvement and input. Um, could you speak to if there is a community advisory board? And what does that look like? And if not, would that be something that you would be open to moving forward if we were to support you?
Yes, so there's a community advisory board right now currently for Ryan White, and I am working, well, working with a consultant to develop a general advisory board.
Thank you.
Go right ahead.
Okay, um, just, I wanted to make sure that I bring this to light also again. How many staff members do you have on staff right now?
Right now, it is 65 to 70.
Okay, and that is a reduction. Within the reduction for the last five years, how many, um, people have been laid off or maybe left on their own or resigned or something? Can you give me that number, please?
There, I have not done any layoffs until this year. So during the pandemic, there was no furloughs and there was no, not, no any layoffs other than someone wanting to switch and go to a different job. I don't have all of the numbers for the last five years. So we had, we originally start, we had two rounds of layoffs. We had one in about March, April, April-ish, May, and then we had another one in July. And so we had two, um, rounds of layoffs, and then some, um, resignations that are happening, but that's all recent.
Okay, um, and I know you, you had spoke about, uh, the team that you have in place. I just think that it is important that you do think about getting on a new team, because if you were in a position of bankruptcy before, which is in what year?
2015 to 2020.
Okay, and then what happened in 2019, I think it was? Was it, I knew you said 2015, there was bankrupt, right?
We went, they went into bankruptcy in 2015. We came out May of 2020.
Okay, and from that time, what has changed? Especially when you, we're, we're now in a different space. So what has changed? What happened? Was it more services? Was it more people? What has happened from that time until now, 2025?
Uh, the COVID pandemic was a huge, um, impact on the projections, uh, that were originally, uh, charted out for the bankruptcy plan. So the bankruptcy plan, we had to support operations moving forward plus bankruptcy debt that needed to be paid quarterly. And because of the pandemic, they made a major hit to, uh, patients that are coming to the health center. So the health center is not functioning at 100%. And so it did have a significant impact on the projections that we originally were relying on for the bankruptcy, uh, for the bankruptcy plan.
Okay, and I know we spoke about, um, if this doesn't happen, that the, the center will close, um, immediately. And then, of course, a plan would be in place to notify those patients, right?
Yes.
And, um, and if that does happen, you want to also make sure that you, um, service the Spanish community to make sure it's in a different language, whether you're going to stay open or not.
Councilwoman Cherry?
So going back to what council, vice president, she asked a question about Elizabeth. Now, being that, you know, the city of Plainfield and the council is looking to infuse this 1.3, and there are no other municipalities that are coming to the aid, you're still looking to keep Elizabeth open?
Yes, for now, yes. Because again, it's usually, it's utilized by both, especially, um, pregnant patients. Dental depends on, we may have staff over in Elizabeth, or they may be here. So the patients do go to both sites. So they don't, they're not completely, um, functioning as two separate, isolated practices.
So what percentage of our Plainfield residents go to Elizabeth?
I don't have that number, I don't have the percentage off the top of my head.
Go ahead.
Just a quick question about your board members. So I was looking at the, the members of your board. How many of them have finance backgrounds?
Uh, right now, so my board chair, he is, he does do a lot of consulting and things in finance.
Dr. Powell, I'm here too.
Dr. Pa, Dr. Devaris, you want to speak to that?
Oh, sure. Um, so I, um, I serve as a executive at Jefferson Health in Philadelphia, and I manage a budget of about three quarters of a billion dollars on my team. Uh, so I have plenty of financial background. We have other folks on the team and the board that are financially savvy. And I also, in addition to being the chair of the board, I also chair the finance committee of the board.
Do you have any board members who are, who are medical doctors?
No.
Thank you.
So question.
During your presentation, you did say that, uh, out of the 65 employees, I don't know if you gave a number, but you said Plainfield area residents? But how many Plainfield residents, uh, work for your organization?
10, right now.
Council president?
Yes, please, go right ahead.
All right, so this is for the government body and the administration. So what this will appear to be is a, a bell up, a government bell up. What will we have in place, uh, for any other nonprofit organizations, um, going forward? They say, hey, you guys did this for the Plainfield Health Center. I know that we talked about there's no comparison between some of the nonprofit organizations here in the city of Plainfield, but just to think off the top of the head, mental health, somebody may say, okay, I like this organization because they provide mental health services. They are closing their doors. So what will we do to create a, a boundary to say, to stop those organizations to coming, coming to the city for help as well? Or will we allow them to open the door and say, hey, I need help from the city?
Let me attempt to address that. And thanks for the question. I would guess that there are probably 50 or more nonprofit organizations in the city of Plainfield. And government is not in the business of financially propping up nonprofits. That's just a fact. We have a situation before us where we have a healthcare provider that has been in the city since 1969 or thereabout, that provides services to just under 9,000 people, roughly half from the city of Plainfield. And by services to 9,000 people, that translates into several thousand more visits per year. Because the average person might go to the doctor or to the health center two or three times per year. So there could be as many as 18,000 or more visits per year by those eight-plus thousands of people. The many nonprofit organizations that are in the city of Plainfield, and I believe there are many, don't compare to what we're talking about here this evening. We're talking about an entity that provides healthcare to thousands of people without insurance, charity care patients. We're talking about an entity that provides regional healthcare services. And without this entity, people will literally die. We've seen the cuts that have come down from Washington DC. And if we look at any number of other nonprofits in the city, we are not in the business of just propping up nonprofits. But this is an extraordinary circumstance that affects little less than 9,000 people, probably anywhere from 16 to 18,000 visits per year. It just doesn't compare. There's nothing in the city labeled as a nonprofit that comes remotely close to resembling what the Plainfield Health Center does for healthcare in the city of Plainfield and to the region as a whole. And so I am not worried about nonprofit XYZ coming with a handout, looking to be rescued when they encounter some level of difficulty. The comparison just isn't there. And so I don't believe that this government body or the administration has a need to worry about that. We have a crisis that is in front of us, and that is what we ought to focus on and not guess as to what might happen down the road if Mary Jane nonprofit comes to us and says, we need some help. There is actually a portion of the constitution that speaks to this. And so that is something that can be addressed with our corporation council when he returns. Now, my concern, quite frankly, Dr. Powell, in looking at your presentation, is that there are roughly, your presentation mentions there are about 56 employees, of which only 10 are from Plainfield, but you can't find qualified people from Plainfield to work for the health center? Where are the rest of those coming from? It says to me that a little less than one-sixth of the employees are Plainfield residents. And I think that we can and should try to do better than that. The question posed by the council regarding Elizabeth is also something that needs to be examined very closely. If we have those 8,500 or so patients, the fact that some Plainfielders might go to Elizabeth, that still doesn't explain why there are about 4,000-plus from Plainfield out of that 8,500, 1,000 from other neighborhoods, which brings that to roughly 5,500, leaving roughly 3,000, uh, give or take a few that are from the Elizabeth area. And I think that for us to be having this discussion, and that there hasn't been an approach to our conversation with the Elizabeth administration to try to seek out some rescue funds as well, I think that is concerning and ought to be revisited, assuming that the council does the right thing and support what it has before us this evening. Because I don't think that we, as elected members of this city, ought to allow the health center to close its doors tomorrow and remove healthcare from thousands and thousands of people. I think that would be, quite frankly, you know, criminal, and we ought not to do that. And I use that word, you know, very, very carefully. I say that because people will die. And I don't want to see that. I don't think any of us want to see that. This is not the perfect solution. I wish we were in a better place. But it suggests to me that there's a lot of work that needs to be done by the health center. And those guardrails that we talked about previously, they have to be put in place because the bleeding has to stop. And we have got to do a better job of protecting an entity that is so badly needed in the city. And without it, I don't know where the city would be, the thousands of people who rely on the health center. And that's all I have to say.
All right. I think that just about does it. Uh, I will entertain a motion to adopt. Okay, clerk, can we have a roll call?
Roll call, resolution 35925. Councilmembers Briggs-Jones?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
That resolution's been adopted. We now need a motion to withdraw MC 2025-38.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, that is withdrawn. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Motion to adjourn.